Hello everyone and welcome to the September 18th Tucker District 2 Post 1 Forum. I'm your host Decaturish Editor and Publisher Dan Wizenhut. Our candidates that are with us today are Kara Schroder. Kara, how are you this morning?
Good morning. I'm doing great. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. And Imani Barnes. Imani, how are you this morning?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm great.
Thank you for joining us. Thomas Walker is also a candidate in this race. He was invited, but he had a conflict. However, he will be a part of our Voters Guide that will be coming out on or around October 1st. So be on the lookout for that. It'll be an e-dition. The election is going to be November 2nd and early voting is going to start on October 12th. All of our coverage will be found at TuckerObserverVotes.com. And if you like what we are doing with these forums, if you appreciate the opportunity to hear from these candidates, please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com. You can see the ad for it there on your right. SupportMyLocalNews.com is where you can sign up to become a financial supporter of Decaturish and the Tucker Observer. And that is the money that we use to provide forums like this, to send riders to meetings, to keep the lights on, all of that good stuff. So if you do appreciate what we do, please take a moment and become a financial supporter of Decaturish and Tucker Observer. Each candidate is going to have three minutes to make an opening statement. I will be keeping time. Candidates, if you're going close to the three-minute mark, I'll give you a little hand signal to let you know you need to wrap it up. And then they're going to get to a Q&amp;A and then they'll have a three-minute closing statement that they can make. If you're watching, first of all, thank you for taking time out of your Saturday morning to join us. If you're watching and want to ask a question, create a Twitch account, give us a follow, and then drop into our chat and just put that question in our chat. And I'll be happy to ask the candidates that for you and they will be happy to answer it. So with that, let's begin. Imani Barnes, we're going to start with you. You have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us this Saturday morning. I appreciate y'all for getting up early and joining us and hearing our issues. Like Dan said, my name is Imani Barnes. I am running for your Tucker District 2 City Council. I am, I've been living in Tucker for four years, but I have grown up around the area my whole life. I lived in Avondale Estates. I graduated from Briar Vista Elementary and I attended Druid Hills High School. I've watched the development of our city and I yearn to be a part of that development. It's a very diverse city and all-new infrastructure popping up. And it's time for growth in Tucker and Tucker is growing immensely and I yearn to be a part of that growth. I have a background in, I have my Bachelor's of Science in Biology, my minor in Chemistry. I have my Master's in Public Health and I'm also almost complete with my PhD in Public Health, which I yearn to bring to the table. I yearn to bring evidence-based research to our issues in Tucker. I yearn to bring evidence-based research to our growth in Tucker. And I yearn to bring our youth out in Tucker. We have a large youth base in Tucker and they are very involved. They yearn to be involved. So I just want to bring, I just want to add to the development of Tucker. And as I have grown up in the community, I would like to raise my 10-year-old son in the community. I'm a single parent and I've been working at Emory University for the past 14 years where I make a pretty good income, but it's still expensive for me to live in Tucker as a single parent. And so I yearn to advocate for people like me, the average citizen that has, the blue-collar citizen. I yearn to advocate for citizens like us and implement some kind of affordable housing for people that can't afford $400,000 and $500,000 homes. I yearn to bring opportunity for those who can't, who don't have degrees and who don't have the education to get big-time jobs to live in Tucker. And so I just yearn to add, okay.
You've got 10 seconds if you want to.
10 seconds. Alright, so I appreciate everyone this morning. I hope you guys join Arms with Barnes. My name is Imani Barnes and please listen to my issues today. Thank you.
Kara Schroder, you have three minutes to make an opening statement.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you Tucker Observer for hosting us today. I am Kara Schroder. I have been here 24 years in the Tucker community. I am running for City Council District 2, Post 1. Because of my commitment for this great city of Tucker, I've been involved with the city since its founding and have served as a volunteer leader and been appointed to Community Council and Planning Commission. Being a City Council member means I can represent the District 2 neighbors and I can make a broader decision to continue to lead the city into the future. As one of your planning commissioners, I have had an honor to impact our community by reviewing zoning applications, text amendments, residential and commercial applications for growth. Part of my volunteer training for Government Affairs includes Atlanta Regional Commission's six-month training as well as for government, new governments, and the Carl Vinson Government Department at UGA. My work experience, I own my own business, Schroder Resources. I'm a nonprofit consultant who works with nonprofits for capital campaigns and capital capacity improvements. This background, after reviewing strategic plans and setting up budgets and implementation for incredible projects across the community, lends me the right decision-making for future projects for the city of Tucker. My City of Tucker volunteer resume with the Friends of Tucker Parks and Henderson Parks clearly speaks to my dedication for the community, families, and citizens of this city. Over the past decade, my volunteer and citizen activism engaged the county to provide important updates to the community for the parks and this before the city was founded. My experience working with the county will allow me a good transition still as we become a city. Many also believe I'm the right candidate to step into the City Council role with major change in the leadership this year. My vision for the city is to be the best city in this community across the community of Atlanta. My website is Kara, C-A-R-A for Tucker, dot com. Kara Schroder.
Thank you Kara. And I forgot to mention this at the beginning of the forum, but for those of you who can't make it, if you're watching and you know some friends who couldn't make it to watch the forum, we are going to be uploading this to YouTube as well. So you'll be able to check it out there and we'll include it in our coverage of the forum. So the first question is going to go to Kara Schroder and then we're going to give the same question to Imani Barnes and then we're just going to kind of go back and forth. So Kara Schroder, starting with you. This election has brought out many different candidates with a diverse range of perspectives. There are people of color running this year. There are members of the LGBTQ community that are running this year. And there are single parents running this year. What does that say to you about the future of Tucker? Three minutes.
The future of Tucker, because of the diversity of our community, will become a place to live, work, and play and pray. It is an incredible amount of friends and neighbors who bring a diverse, you know, background. I certainly believe that we need to address the non-discriminatory policy and make some decisions about how that will play out in the city government. I must say that I have friends who I've talked to and neighbors about that one-on-one and I think it's really important that the city address it. And so I will, when I become a council member, I will spend time doing that right away and making some solutions. Our community, we have neighbors who come from a variety of backgrounds and I will welcome them to the table, invite them to be a part of our process for the city and listen to them. They want to be heard and many of them are paying attention to this election and I'm very excited about that. And I hope that they will elect the right candidate for each position.
Thank you Kara Schroder. Imani Barnes, same question to you. This election has brought out many different candidates with a diverse range of perspectives. There are people of color running this year. There are members of the LGBTQ community running this year. And there are single parents that are running this year. What does that say to you about the future of Tucker? Three minutes.
So it's Imani.
Imani, I apologize.
Alright, so all those categories that you just mentioned, I fit in each one of those. So I know how to better represent each one of those. I am the single parent. I am the person of color and I am the representative of the LGBT community. So I understand issues from all three of those categories. And I am ready to represent people from all backgrounds. I am ready to represent people and their issues that don't have a chance to be heard at the city of Tucker. The representation of the diversity does not, I don't see it. I don't see it on Tucker's website. Tucker Day, the pictures that were displayed from Tucker Day, I did not see it in those pictures. And the diversity of Tucker should be better represented and why not have someone who represents those categories up there to bring the issues that we want represented to the table? Juneteenth, we yearn for a Juneteenth celebration in Tucker on Main Street. Down the streets of Main Street, we deserve a Juneteenth celebration. It's Hispanic Pride Month or Heritage Month right now. There deserves to be a celebration for that right now. So the diversity of Tucker with 37% black residents and citizens, I don't see the representation. So it's time for that. And so I say let's elect someone who represents those, that diversity of Tucker because it's time to, for that. The development that we have gone on in Tucker needs this representation because we live all over Tucker, especially in District 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Imani, this next question, we're going to start with you. What are your goals in the next four years for three city services? Zoning, code enforcement, and parks. And just to read those again, it's zoning and code enforcement and parks. Three minutes.
Uh, zoning. I feel that we should continue to develop our zoning laws. We have to continue to, wait, let me get my notes on my zoning. Alright, so I'll start with parks. I feel with parks, we have to continue to get money and funding to expand our parks. I feel like we need to have better accessibility for our disabled in our older parks. And as we develop our newer parks, let's reach out and see which type of accessibility is needed in our newer parks as far as disabled. I've had, I've had citizens come to me and have disabled family members that have problems with access to the parks. So looking into that, I feel our lakes and our parks should be cleaned. They look, they look nasty. Let's look into how we can dredge our lakes and let's put some effort into that ASAP because it's taken away from the beauty of our parks. Let's look into impact fees that contribute to the funding of our parks and our expansion of our parks. What was the, you said zoning parks and what was the?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. As far as code enforcement, I would like to research the demographics on the, on tickets issued, on incidents with code enforcement and see if there's a disparity with the, the tickets issued, the citations issued. I would like to look into that. I was, I heard Candidate Byrow mention he doesn't see code enforcement coming around Smoke Rise. So is there a disparity there? So I would like to look into that. So those are, that's my stance on those issues.
Thank you so much. Kara Schroder, same question to you. What are your goals in the next four years for these three specific services? Zoning, code enforcement, and parks. And I'll read those again. Zoning, code enforcement, and parks. Three minutes.
Well, zoning and planning has three plans on the, inside the city of Tucker. One is Tucker Tomorrow, then there's Development, Downtown Development Authority Planning. And then there are plans that connect that are Trails and Master Plan for Parks. And so you have to follow the zoning plans for redevelopment and new development. And so my goal would be to make sure that we use our Tucker Tomorrow plans to follow implementation and redevelopment. One of my number one priorities is to begin to update the Lawrenceville Highway Business District. When you come off of 285 and you drive up Lawrenceville Highway, we have a variety of opportunities for redevelopment along Brockett and Fellowship and Coolidge. I'd like to see us kind of look at that for improvement. So in zoning, that's one of the things that would be a number one priority for me. When it comes to code enforcement, code enforcement has a variety of important things happening. There are new text amendments. They're working on signage change throughout the community in the city. How signs are built and what they look like. They're also working in the residential neighborhoods to make sure that everybody's doing things like mowing their lawns and getting rid of their garbage. And so I think that's a number one priority and especially in District 2, to make sure we keep cleaning up and have curb appeal. And then from parks, which I could talk about for more than three minutes, is I believe Fitzgerald Field is a number one priority for development. I know we've spent a lot of money as the city already for infrastructure updates and field updates and lighting because we can then use Fitzgerald Field as an economic driver. One, to support city funds, to then move to, back into the parks and add more amenities. And then two, just to support those businesses around Fitzgerald Field for economic development.
Thank you. So our next question is going to come from a viewer watching us on Twitch and we'll start with Kara Schroder. Kara, Tucker's comprehensive plan is an opportunity to demonstrate the measures and progress towards success in Tucker. What additional measures of success would you add to that plan? Three minutes.
Well, the first would be making sure that we balance the hometown feel of Tucker with the new development, especially residential developments coming into town. For example, the residential development of townhomes off of Moore's at Lawrenceville Highway. That developer is doing a front porch theme and I think that just shows hometown. And then at the same time, measuring success for making sure when we make decisions about the redevelopment opportunities that we pay close attention to the comprehensive plan. We pay attention to the zoning and we pay attention to working together as a community to make good decisions. When I was at the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday night, the Chick-fil-A application that is on the agenda, the Planning Commission colleagues really focused on that drive-through and what could happen with that drive-through. And they had a variety of interesting thoughts and processes that they could add to the, to the next steps with that application. And I believe that that's really important to us as citizens and as the city leadership, that we work as a team to come up with really good solutions to continue to grow in the future.
Thank you. Imani, same question for you. Tucker's comprehensive plan is an opportunity to demonstrate measures and progress towards success in Tucker. What additional measures of success would you add to that plan? Three minutes.
Um, the comprehensive plan addresses positive change. So with that alone, I feel we need to add diversity and racial equity into the plan. We need to look into our racial issues in Tucker. There are racial issues in Tucker. And we need to look into it and we need to include diversity and equity into our comprehensive plan. Hence, the NDO. It's still in a draft phase. It hasn't been taken to the next step. And it should be looked into. It doesn't just protect and give rights to one demographic. It gives rights to religion and, and it gives rights, rights to race and sexual orientation. And so why not add that to the comprehensive plan under positive change? So those are my main issues because Tucker is diverse, but I doesn't, I don't feel it's all-inclusive. So let's, let's promote racial equity. Let's promote the real diversity of Tucker. So that's part of it. That's part of my addition to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. And that's a great lead-in to our next question, Imani, which is, do you, what is your position on implementing a nondiscrimination ordinance in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
From my public health background, I yearn to apply science. And when I say science, I'm not talking about in the lab. I'm talking about let's look into frameworks and apply this to this NDO. Let's have, let's have our community come together. We have a diverse community in Tucker. We have Emory scientists. We have CDC scientists. We have engineers. We have so diverse professional background in Tucker and why not bring everybody together to formulate this plan so that it benefits everybody? And for those that feel like it doesn't benefit them and for those who feel like it'll bring negativity to our city, let's look into why they feel like that. And then, and then let's try to mitigate those issues because it's necessary. We do have discrimination here in Tucker and it happens and it's, it's coming out. And the more and more we hear about it, the more and more we try to cover it up and we can't cover it up. And so surrounding cities have adopted it and they have had no problem. So why can't we get it to, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it with the community. Let's see why those that don't support it don't support it. And let's put a framework to it to see where we're at with the NDO. And then let's try to work it out because um let's bring our community out. Let's fill up those seats in the city council meetings. Let's uh get the let's continue our city council meetings via Zoom so we can have more uh people involved so we can hear our issues on this and get a let's let's get it out of draft phase. We we deserve we deserve equity in Tucker.
Okay, thank you. Uh Kara Schroder, same question to you. What is your position on implementing a nondiscrimination ordinance in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Tucker is welcoming and a caring community, and we always have been since our founding. And in fact, the history of the difference in the the cities that were kind of kind of, you know, moving forward to be sitter City of Tucker versus we were, you know, Tucker twenty fifteen. Um one of the one of the maps that was drawn was was to eliminate Lawrenceville Highway um or across the railroad tracks. So and that did not happen, and that did not happen because we had leaders at the table who said we want to include all of Tucker. And so, yes, I am for the NDO, as I mentioned before. I believe that um we have a variety of wonderful um business owners and community volunteers and leaders involved that that represent a diverse group um in the community. Yesterday, I mean Thursday, I was at the Tucker Business Association meeting, and we were um joined by several business owners in the community who li- who um live, work, and play, so to speak, around Main Street of diversity. And I was thrilled to see them and meet them. Um and we have several volunteers involved for years and years of friends of Henderson Park and friends of Tucker Parks that represent diversity as well as our boards and commissions. And so I believe that's really important to state. I also believe that we need and want to invite more people to the table to participate. Um our diversity in Tucker is an asset, and we need to utilize that to build for the future and to become a great city.
Thank you. Uh Kara, we'll start the next question with you. Tucker has a history of a strong business community that predates it becoming a city. How will you balance the interest of CIDs, residents, business owners, and property owners when it comes to making good policy for the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Well, for District Two, when it comes to business development, um one of the things that is really important to note is that in the next four to ten years, we're going to have a lot of change. There is so much great opportunity for business development, and I'm really excited about that. And I also want to note that when we continue to grow, I'm going to appeal to the small business owners, to the manufacturing companies who work live, work, live and work here, and their employees for workforce development that relates to then in a future probably um question about affordable housing. When you look at District Two and you go north on Lawrenceville Highway, there will be a variety of opportunities for redevelopment. We want to invite those business owners to the table, include them in decision-making, and um listen to what they want um to improve the business district. The North Lake Mall and North Lake Festival area, which is involved with the North Lake CID, has a variety of goals and plans as well. Those goals will also be affected by transportation. That two eighty-five is getting ready to have some major changes. Um and we're really excited about Emory coming in at North Lake Mall and the changes there. So then that can obviously support more shops and eateries in that community. And so my goal would be to really make sure that every business owner is involved in Tucker at some level and utilize, excuse me, the networks um and discussion opportunities through the CID, through a Tucker Business Discussion, through City of Tucker Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh Imani, same question to you. Tucker has a history of a strong business community that predates it becoming a city. How will you balance the interest of CIDs, residents, business owners, and property owners when it comes to making good policy for the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Um thanks for the question. Um I I feel that we do have to balance all of the business owners, the homeowners. And I was also at the meeting on Thursday. Um and I had a different take from the meeting. Um the Chick-fil-A will cause traffic down residential in a residential neighborhood, and the citizens in that neighborhood spoke, and I heard them, and I related to them. And I have a child who rides his bike in the street, and I related to them with that. Um I also related with them going to Chick-fil-A because when I go to Chick-fil-A, I'm always hungry. So uh speeding is an issue. And uh they were like, it's twenty-five miles per hour down the Ross Road in the neighborhood, and uh people are not gonna just go twenty-five miles per hour. People are gonna go faster than that with the kids and the people walking their dogs in the middle of the street. So I related to the citizens in that uh in the meeting, and um I know they were trying to redevelop the driveway, but that doesn't take away from the people that are going to cut through the neighborhood. It's it's inevitable. Uh we use Waze, we use GPS systems that send people short routes and is right through people's neighborhood and speed uh devices. You can put that in there, but who's gonna pay for it? Is the neighborhood gonna pay for it, or is the city gonna pay for it? Um so as far as the North Lake development, yeah, we're developing the North Lake area, but who are we developing it for? Um I couldn't go afford twenty-two hundred dollar condos back there, twenty-two to twenty-five hundred dollar condos, which is what they're gonna be starting the rent off. So that automatically uh disqualifies a certain demographic, and the demographic in District Two are part of the lower so uh middle socioeconomic class. So we're pretty much uh excluding them from that development. And so how can we get a couple of units or ten to fifteen units in those developments for affordable housing or 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 fair housing? Um the taxes from the CID do definitely benefit us. Um and I do feel like it's beneficial, but let's 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 my my biggest thing is let's promote equity, housing equity. Uh I have a small business. It's called I Can Become Anything. It's a youth development business, and I work with teenagers in our community. And uh um how can I afford rent in a a brick and mortar in Tucker? Um so I I stand for everyone, and I will be responsive to the business owners in Tucker. When they call, when they reach out, I will respond to you because they have concerns. So let's respond to their concerns.
Thank you, Imani. Uh next question is actually gonna start with Imani. Uh what needs to happen before the city of Tucker can take over stormwater and roads from DeKalb County? It's been a year since it was proposed at city council. Uh three minutes.
Well, we have to look into how we're gonna uh pay for it and who's going to uh keep up with the maintenance. So is it best for us to adopt such a big feat? Um I feel like we that's a developing issue, and we have to continue to see how we can afford to take over stormwater because it's it's not just on the residential, it's not just on the main streets, it's on the residential streets too. So we'll be taking on a big feat. So I think um researching and understanding how we can pay for it, and I would have to look more into that issue.
Thank you. Uh Kara Schroder, same question for you. What needs to happen before the city of Tucker can take over stormwater and roads from DeKalb DeKalb County? It's been uh over a year since that was proposed at city council. Three minutes.
The city of Tucker should carefully consider whether the city would provide more efficient and effective services to transfer roads and stormwater management from DeKalb County. It's my understanding that city staff and mayor and council have been working tirelessly on the roads and drainage department issues since the beginning. Through SPOS funds, the city is paving roads and adding sidewalks, but we need to be able to take care of that infrastructure, which means we may need to take on the maintenance of the roads and drainage. However, the citizens of the city have to approve a referendum to do that. Before we even go to the citizens to ask them to approve a referendum and take on a department like roads and drainage, we really must look at a business plan and the outcomes. How many staff do we need to hire? What the impact would be in the city to run the city and add such a department? There are numerous issues right now with stormwater, and I am really sad about that. And yet, it is because we have not had the the county's presence on stormwater issues often on in the past, which is one reason why we're an independent city. We are now collaborating with DeKalb County to take care of those issues. I think it's a future discussion, um and I am not gonna say that we will or won't because I we it's it's to be voted on by referendum.
Thank you. Uh Kara Schroder, this next question, we'll start with you. Do you think Tucker should have its own police department? And if so, how should the city pay for it? Three minutes.
The city of Tucker has a unique partnership with the DeKalb County Police Department. We collaborate and partner on issues. They have provided increased opportunities to protect our citizens. It's a good collaboration, and I am grateful to Michael Thurman for making that happen early on. If we are a city and we're not paying attention to the public safety issues, then that does not help support our vision and few uh vision and mission of the city. Most recently in District Two, well, earlier this summer, in District Two, we had an incident on Brockett Road in which we um lost a citizen. It was an isolated incident, and yet the police came together to work with us. Um and the city of of Tucker approved um funds to add traffic calming along Brockett and Shambly Tucker, and those funds are being implemented now. You can drive down Brockett and see that because of that incident. We've got to slow down speeding. It is not it is not an a public safety issue that's a city of Tucker, of course, issue. It's it's a it's an issue a- across the community when it comes to across Atlanta. When it comes to the police, I don't believe we need an independent department. I think we need to continue our collaboration, partly because as a community, we should be partnering beyond our um lines as a city and making sure we're we're um collaborating with other communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Imani, same question to you. Do you think Tucker should have its own police department? And if so, how will the city pay for it? Three minutes.
Here, I my my biggest uh talking point equity. Before Tucker can have its own police department, we have to address our equity uh amongst its citizens. I am fearful of us getting a police department and it be racial disparities. Um I'm fearful that we would just focus on one uh demographic. And so that's just one of my issues um as far as how we're going to fund a a how we're gonna fund a Tucker police, a single Tucker Police Department is um in question. Will we have enough funds to support all the resources that we need for the police department? Are we gonna have SWAT? Are we gonna have the uh departments that we need for all the little departments in the Tucker Police Department? So I do believe we can we should continue to pair up with DeKalb County. As Kara said, I support the that vision as well. Um I support also, you know, doing more research into an independent the police department uh community watch program. Um the way we implemented the homeless camping ban, I don't feel like we need our own the police department. Um even though, you know, um I I still want to look up the demographics of after that was implemented, how many times somebody was actually arrested. Um and so let's research that, and that gives evidence to if we need our own independent police department. So right now, I say stick with DeKalb County. Let's continue to use their wonderful resources, and um that's my stance on that.
Thank you. Uh Imani, this next question will be for you. Um sinkholes are prevalent in Atlanta because the city is built on and on and around creeks and forks of rivers. How can Tucker work with residents in DeKalb County to address sinkholes in neighborhoods? Uh three minutes.
Um let's say the the world is becoming more innovative. Technology is of the utmost uh use, so let's uh implement some kind of online uh sinkhole. Like, let's come up with some kind of entry where you can uh report a sinkhole quickly to the city so we can address it and get uh people out there to fix it quicker. It'll save us uh money on our cars. It'll save us tax dollars from uh future um erosion. Um let's use our SPOS funds. Uh we're running out of that though, so we'll have to find other ways to pay for it. So uh let's continue to apply for grants and work with the county to get that fixed. If we were independently supposed uh to take that up, I think as again, it will be an expensive um feat. So let's continue to pair with the county and the state and getting funding for that and use our funds to develop innovative programs to report them quicker before they get worse and tear up people's cars for insurance claims and everything like that. So I say let's uh come up with different ways to report it right now.
Thank you. Uh Kara Schroder, uh three minutes question to you. Sinkholes are prevalent prevalent in Atlanta because the city is built on and around creeks and forks of rivers. How can Tucker work with residents in DeKalb County to address sinkholes in neighborhoods? Three minutes.
Well, DeKalb County really owns our roads. Hence, the the prior question that you asked about taking on roads and drainage. So we have to partner and collaborate with DeKalb County to make it happen. I know that um several city council members have a long list of sinkholes on their agenda, and they've been working on them off and on since we were founded. And it is a challenge, and it's a problem. And what I would say is is we we've got to continue to collaborate with the county to get them filled. Um and at the same time, we've got to pay close attention to what's happening with our stormwater and what's happening with the creeks and the lakes um across especially District Two. We have the South Fork of the Peachtree Creek that um adds to the layer on several occasions off of Idlewood especially and um Brockett Road, and then back in a couple of the neighborhoods. And so we need to do some studies about where that where the storm stormwater is going. And especially now because we're having global warming, I think it's becoming more prevalent. Um but if I if I had a neighbor call me um and I was city council, I would put it on my list, and I would call the um the the city and say, hey, can we get can we get the pothole filled at the end of the block for, you know, at Idlewood or wherever, and keep it on my list until it was filled. Um and sometimes that takes quite a bit of time because the county is always backed up and and taking care of the pothole situation. I do think that the city has um several people in place that collaborate on those issues that we just need to keep on top of it.
Thank you. Uh Kara Schroder, we'll start the next question with you. Uh Tucker has seen growth in recent years, including new residential developments. What are your plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now? Three minutes.
We we are gonna need to continue to keep a balance between that hometown feel, as I mentioned before, and new residential developments, especially and what they look like. Um we need to hear from the neighbors. Um when you asked me the um the question about the comprehensive plan, I didn't mention that at the beginning, when we started the comprehensive plan and the Tucker Tomorrow Planning, we invited citizens to give us their opinions and um and, you know, ask them what they wanted. Um so we need to follow those um criterias and the plans. It it is going to be a challenge. We're gonna have new development come in here. We're gonna have um we're gonna have to figure out how to keep a balance on what's affordable. Um and we're gonna have to work with the developers um inside the the zoning codes to um make additions um in a variety of places in the city. I'm really excited about it. I think it lends an opportunity to our future success as a city as well.
Thank you. Uh Imani, same question for you. Tucker has seen growth in recent years, including new residential developments. What are your plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now? Three minutes.
Let's uh let's let's include um community in this in the in these ideas. Like, um when we when we're developing these communities, um are we including everybody in the in the in the decision-making? Or are we only including um people who don't even live in the lower working class? So what would um let's bring out people who usually don't come out for these meetings. How do we get these people out? How do we get our youth out who are gonna grow up in Tucker? Um how do we get our people that aren't usually involved, involved? So development is all in involved, involved? So development is all-inclusive. It's not just, development is all-inclusive. So fair housing, equal access to housing. And so, how can a single parent like me go and afford a home in Tucker? Because right now, I live in an apartment, and I do live in an apartment, but I've been at Emory University for 14 years, and I have a great income. But I want to raise my son in Tucker. So how can I go afford a home in Tucker and still live comfortably with my single household? So that's a part of the development of Tucker, including everyone. And can you give me the end part of that question, please?
Sure. What are your plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now?
Like at the Business Association meeting last week, let's continue to invite community and have community out and expressing their issues. Because without them expressing that, they don't want people speeding and flying through their neighborhood, we would never know, and we'll just put that Chick-fil-A right there, and people will have to deal with it. And guess what? That Chick-fil-A is going to grow, and they're going to expand, and it's just going to be more and more traffic, and people are going to move out. And we don't want people to move out of Tucker. So we have to involve everyone. I yearn to, let's develop Tucker with the world. Like, Sean Woods is promoting e-gaming. Why not bring that to Tucker when we have so many youth that are involved in digital gaming? Why not bring that here and bring our youth out? Why don't we have youth parades down Main Street? I yearn to have a safe space for our LGBTQ youth. Do you know how many of those are in Tucker that do not feel comfortable at school? Or give them a safe space to come, an internet cafe for the kids. Bring our youth out. We have so many events for our adults, for our seniors. Let's have stroller-friendly events down Main Street. Let's have kid-friendly 5Ks. I mean, I know we have that, but let's involve everybody. And so, the development of Tucker, vote for Imani Barnes, and let's do this. Let's involve everybody. Let's involve community.
Thank you, Imani. And the next question is going to start with you. Climate change will affect everyone in the coming years. What is your plan to protect the local environment in Tucker? Three minutes.
Climate change is broad. Like, we'll have to get our experts in here to address the climate change. Climate change is broad. Like, we have, we're right here at 285. Look at the, it's pollution. So how do we address that? We bring in the experts. I'm not an expert in climate change, you know what I'm saying? But I will definitely bring in the experts, and let's discuss what we need to do in Tucker to keep our emissions clear in the city. All of the car shops, does that affect our atmosphere? We do have lakes and streams. How does that erosion affect anything, everything in Tucker? The ground, the sidewalks, the streets. So, I mean, we'll have to bring in experts. I'm not an expert at climate change, but we can definitely bring people in to talk about that.
Thank you so much. Kara Schroeder, three minutes. Climate change will affect everyone in the coming years. What is your plan to protect the local environment here in Tucker?
Well, the city of Tucker includes 13 parks, and I believe the parks are open to all citizens. And so, that needs to be continued to be protected. We need to allocate funds to continue to protect the tree canopy. I am aware that the Friends of Henderson Park just recently filled out some paperwork to become a tree canopy organization. And we have a tree recompense for developers they have to pay into, so we can plant new trees when we tear others down, which I believe does affect climate change here right now. I do think that we, because the Friends, I'm sorry, because the park's master plan specifically states adding amenities and resources to grow participation, to engage all citizens to come to our parks, that that will help climate change, but I'm not sure that it will completely address it. And, you know, it is an issue. And I became involved, partly in the parks, because I wanted to be outdoors, and partly because I know that we are facing lots of climate issues. One of the things that's happening at the Tucker Nature Preserve is they're starting a Bumblebee project with funding from the county in partnership, which is really exciting. They're going to also grow a community garden. And so, I believe we're going to be turning some of our ongoing programming, as things continue to move forward with the city, to offer opportunities for environmental education for our families, gardening, for example, for our families. And then, you know, I think that's about where we're at. You know, there's certainly a lot of tree canopy in this community that I would like to see protected. And at the same time, we can also plant a new tree from the standpoint of a tree, a number and tree, the counting of the tree canopy. I get really sad. I've been driving around Tucker a lot more, and I see a lot of people cutting down trees. And I know that code enforcement is supposed to receive, they're supposed to fill out a, and report when they're cutting down trees. And I'd really like to see more of that happening. Neighbors saying, hey, you can't cut down all your trees in the backyard. That's not okay. So, anyway, I mean, the city doesn't really have a department for climate change, but we certainly could explore what that might look like.
Everybody talks about the parks, the parks. We put all that money in Fitzgerald Park, but we can't clean up the lakes. So we can have trees, but the lakes are nasty. So climate change has the lakes like that. We need to address that. That's, who wants the flies and the gnats and all this stuff that comes up from the lakes? The algae is so thick. All the lakes look nasty. So we can address the trees and all that, but let's clean that up, because it's actually dangerous and it's unhealthy.
Kara, would you like 30 seconds to respond?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, the dams are owned by the DeKalb County.
So we need to, we have to address that. We can't just have the lakes looking like that, and we're addressing trees and everything. So collaborate with the county.
I just didn't bring up the dams. I was addressing the tree canopy.
The lakes are a part of the parks.
Okay. Thank you both. Let's move on to the next question. Kara Schroeder, starting with you. What is your opinion of Tucker's current urban camping ordinance? And if you are elected, what is your plan to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Homelessness is certainly a problem throughout the community. I work with several nonprofits who have programs to support homelessness and affordability of housing, transitional housing, and job placement programming. It is a problem across the United States. One of the things that I believe is really important for the city is to continue to partner with networks. They're one of the most important nonprofits, I believe, here in the community. They're the ones who pivoted during COVID to offer more and more support to families who were laid off and didn't have money for food to feed their families. And then, when the CARES Act money came through, that money was allocated to help pay for rent and utilities. When it comes to homelessness, the police department has a variety of, I guess, policies and procedures that were, you know, in agreement with the city to help a homeless person. Many police officers have spent their own money to help get people off the streets here in Tucker, and I think that's really wonderful. I think we need to continue to work on it as a community. One of the best nonprofits that I've seen that do address homelessness are the Housing, Transitional Housing Groups, Nicholas House, Decatur Quaphter of Ministry with their churches. So in the future, after, when I step in as city council for District Two, I'd be looking for some more collaboration and work with that group to see what we can do to address it.
Thank you. Imani, same question to you. What is your opinion of Tucker's current urban camping ordinance? And if you are elected, what is your plan to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Well, when you elect Imani Barnes for city council District Two, I will bring my public health expertise into addressing our homelessness issue by comparing it to comparable cities, surrounding cities, and how they address their homelessness issue. The only issue that I have a problem with is criminalizing our homelessness. We can come up with better options for helping our homeless. It's not just go tell them to go somewhere else. There are mental issues that are involved. So let's bring our psychiatrists or our psychologists in, who are experts in mental health. Let's address mental health. And I, don't get me wrong, I appreciate our police department for, you know, their generosity, and I don't feel like they're harsh with the homeless, but we'll never get to a solution if we don't explore different options. And I know we did have a meeting with the community, but it still resulted in us adopting the ban. And so, obviously, we need to come back together to the table and figure out how we can not criminalize these people and actually help them. Let's put them in some of these jobs that are available around Tucker. Let's put them in some of these $2,200 apartments that are in Tucker. Let's help them in other ways. And I know we have a unit, a mental health unit now, so that's appreciative. So we are coming up with solutions, but let's continue to improve those solutions with our experts in the community. So I appreciate the council for actually bringing the community together for this issue, but I don't feel like it was ready to be passed yet, because we resulted in criminalizing the homeless. So, and let's also bring to the forefront the data on how many people were criminalized and the racial makeup of those who were criminalized. So we have some more work to do, and as your councilwoman, I will definitely be one of my main issues in how we can improve it.
Thank you. And that is the last question that we will have time for. It is getting close to 10 o'clock, and I do want to be respectful of both candidates' time. So I'm going to give each of you three minutes to make a closing statement, and we're going to start with Imani Barnes. Three minutes.
Imani Barnes, Imani Barnes, Imani Barnes. I am your councilwoman. I represent the diversity of Tucker. I have grown up in the area. I am raising my son in Tucker. I want to continue to raise my son in Tucker. I want to represent the underrepresented in Tucker. I'm ready to bring a voice in Tucker, and I'm highly qualified to bring a voice to Tucker with my background. Growing up in the area, watching the development, I grew up in the area, and I work in the area, and we play in Tucker. And so, I would like to continue that. I would like to see more diversity on the main streets of Tucker. I'm ready to bring that diversity out. I will bring the people out. I will bring the youth out. I'm ready to advocate for different demographics in Tucker. And when you vote for Imani Barnes, we can start October 12. You can go vote October 12, or you can go on Election Day. But either way, go vote for Imani Barnes for your District Two. And I'm ready to bring equity, science, and evidence-based solutions to our issues in Tucker. And guess what? When you call my phone, when you email me, I will call you back personally within 48 hours, but I will call you back. I am that candidate. And so, when you elect Imani Barnes on November 2 or October 12, I will be ready to serve my community.
Thank you so much. Kara Schroeder, a closing statement from you. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you, Dan, and thank you, Tucker Observer and Decaturish for hosting this debate. Thank you, Imani Barnes, for joining us today as well. The District Two City Council seat is an important seat to fill, and I'm inviting you all to vote for me and elect me. You know me, you know my track record, you know my volunteer experience, you know my qualifications, and my experience and my commitment to caring for this city. I'm asking you for your vote. I'm the most qualified for District Two. And I want to invite you all to be heard at the table. I am open to phone calls as well, and I have an email address, kara@karaforTucker.com. My website is karaforTucker.com. I urge you to vote, and vote soon, as soon as you can. The Tucker Cofer Library will be open for early voting starting October 12. So, and thank you again for this time today.
Thank you both so much for joining us. The candidates, again, are Kara Schroeder and Imani Barnes. Thomas Walker is also running. He could not be here today. He will be a part of our Q and A, which will be out on October 1. I wanted to thank both candidates for expressing an interest in public service, for being willing to devote their time to that. Local government is the most important and impactful government that we have. It's the government that has the biggest ability to affect you directly. So it's important that we have candidates that express an interest and are willing to put themselves out there. It's important that we have engaged voters that are willing to listen to these candidates and make an informed choice. Our next forum today is going to be held in about an hour. It's going to be District Three, Post One, and that's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to noon. If you appreciate these forums, if you appreciate what we're doing, getting this election covered for y'all, go visit supportmylocalnews.com and consider becoming a paying supporter of Decaturish and Tucker Observer. It's what allows us to conduct these forums. It's what allows us to have writers that attend these meetings, to cover what's going on in our local government. And it's just very important to support your local news. You know, free news is not free. We do have expenses that we have to incur to put the news out there. So please, if this meant something to you, please consider making a contribution or making an ongoing commitment to supporting Tucker Observer and Decaturish. The early voting does start October 12. The election is November 2. All of our elections coverage can be found at tuckera observer votes dot com. Again, that is tuckera observer votes dot com. Thank you, everyone, for watching, and we will see you again in about an hour. Bye-bye, everybody.